To order for tonight, Mr. Root will get the invocation.
If you'd like. Father, thank you for this day that you've given us. And let us not recite of that that each day is a gift, each moment is a gift and help us to be in the moment, make it present, be kind, have wisdom. Tonight is as we conduct this conference. It gives us insight, helps us along the way, says it out of the way really to your meaning. You know what I'm saying?
Pledge of allegiance?
Your idea, you want to leave it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got the minutes from the October 2nd meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
Got a typo on the top of page two, the word concerns.
There's also a typo on the middle of page three, under pedestrian and other amenities.
All those in favor of approving the minutes with corrected typos, said typos, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. And public comment, I think we had a couple of people sign up, new ones, I think.
It's the first time y'all doing this, right? I gotta run my traditional lap.
Jerry?
As I said earlier, it looks like those of us in the rural community will have to spend our lives looking over our shoulder to see where the stalkers are. Because the rural community is basically being stalked. And beginning from day one, and the vision people were having their visions, the target was to, or the goal was to control the rural community. Basically, all of these people lived in a small geographic area of the county. And I won't say what geographic area, but you know. And I think it's a shame, especially when people that are on our payroll keep cooking up scheme after scheme to strip us of our private property rights. The rustic elegance, I think we all know where that originated. Heritage corridor, we know where that originated. Now sometime, this has got stopped. This is costing us in time and resources to keep trying to find a way to conquer the rural community, be it the corridor or whatever. This land belongs to American citizens, and it's time we were recognized as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markovich?
Good evening, y'all. For the record, I am Tom Markovich, and I guess two subjects I want to talk about tonight. One, that caught my attention is the multifamily discussion. I just believe we trying to make this thing way too complicated. Truly, the simplest mechanism to take care of our issues with multifamily is to simply put the setbacks where they were and put this thing back in subdivision ordinance like it was originally. Now we're going off and looking at all these different types of zoning requirements and everything to keep it in the current uncontrolled zone. And the thing of it is, is that everything that goes into that zoning document is supposed to be a reflection of what is in the comprehensive plan. I'm sorry, but I've read the comprehensive plan many times, and I just read it recently today, and it just doesn't address multifamily housing. It talks about it in sense that we had a sewer moratorium in this county for many, 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 many years, and so it made it very difficult to even do multifamily housing. So it talks about the lack of sewer, and it talks about the lack of multifamily housing, and that's about it. So I find it very difficult to go into this in-depth discussion on multifamily housing and all these different zoning requirements when it's not even an issue in the comprehensive plan. Two, the idea of traditional neighborhood becoming a zoning district in and of itself. This is something that in most areas is done through plan development. There's no reason why it can't be done as a plan development here. I realize that when Okuny County adopted their ordinance for plan development, they had a requirement in there for a commercial component of it, but nothing in the state law requires that. It could be commercial, or it could be some other aspect of a different type of use, but it doesn't have to be commercial. To me, it would be much easier to go back and fix the ordinance that has our plan development requirements in it than it would be to go in there and create a whole new zoning mechanism that's gonna ultimately do the same thing as, is what plan development already does. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Staff update?
Yes, sir. We processed about forty-six various floodplain and zoning reviews in the last couple of weeks, and also I'd like to introduce Sherri Williams. She's our new planner.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all she was just to say. So yeah, that's our, our staff update. Thanks, sir.
Proposed corridor overlay.
So if I may, so this is, this section is just what we talked about last week, but it's just the portion that applies to all corridors. So this is the, I believe as Mr. Johnson put it, the preamble. So all this language is the legalese, so to speak, of the corridors. Mr. Root did updates on this language, so this is fairly solid. Some of the words, such as those first set of underlines, gateways have been changed to different wording, so hope that meets some of the requirements that you all asked for last week.
As far as our discussion on this, and again, to me, we're kind of in a holding pattern until we have our meeting with county council next, next week.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I don't know how far we want to go into this, I mean, for what was talked about last time and what was updated and where we're at. I don't know if it's the opinion of the commission that we kind of put a hold on this until after next week's meeting and see what the taste is towards the corridors from county council, you know, that we were given direction. Now it's out there in the public, are they gonna continue with that direction, or are we gonna be directed to do something else? So I don't want to spend a lot of time on doing something if we're gonna be redirected next week to do something else. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Do we need, do we need a motion to postpone it? No, there's no pending motion.
If I may just add one more thing, so kind of like this, but about the workshop, since what would you all like for me to bring to the workshop as far as anything? I haven't provided Katie Smith, clerk counsel, with any sort of backup material for this because I don't know necessarily what I should bring. I have some maps, I have the things we already worked on regarding this, maybe not necessarily regarding all the rest of the items on the agenda.
Do they have a copy of this?
Yeah, council made up this.
No, this.
Do they have a copy of this?
They do not. They have not, outside of it's posted publicly, I haven't sent copies of backup.
They, they should have a copy of the proposed ordinance that we're working on to read over.
If this is to be the preamble.
Send a copy. Yeah, and even the stuff that you've given us tonight for the family, multifamily development and the traditional neighborhood development, but I know they probably have some, but this is, they have the same material we have to give a little better understanding of what the discussion's gonna be.
Okay, so. Yeah, it'd be my opinion to have this. I think we also need to have a general overlay map, or, you know, general map of potential corridors. Again, if the intention of the council is to direct us to move forward on corridors, that they see the potential corridors that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
You know, because again, we're, we're throwing out different road numbers and avenues, and, and I think that if they saw what could possibly be impacted, then that would give them better judgment to give us better direction.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
It seems that the push is to get started with the 123 between Quemson and Seneca, and what I would like to see in that area is a map showing the available parcels for us to control.
You mean the currently undeveloped parcels, which I'm looking for?
Yes.
Because all of them would be under control in various things, but you mean, so current undeveloped parcels?
Mm-hmm.
I'll see what I can do.
That took over two and a half hours last week, and we knocked it out in about three minutes tonight, so.
You guys were getting quicker.
I'm not sure if that's the right direction, but, you know, I'd rather do that than, I mean, I'd rather not waste our time this week if we're gonna be directed to go a different direction next week.
Seems legitimate, sir.
To me, that makes sense.
Agreed.
Sure.
Everybody agree? Okay, so we'll move on to number eight. Discussion on proposed multifamily.
If I may.
If you may.
This was, it started off kind of an ordinance, and I kind of dialed it back to just kind of, kind of bullet points. I wanted more feedback, more input, especially since next week, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, multifamily's number seven on the agenda for the workshop next week. So I figured if we would just have a discussion of it, you know, kind of do a little warm-up, be thinking about it this week while we're going through it, and I kind of want a large font on that one because the last time I kind of hit it in the weeds, so it's only for the control-free district. And so what would it apply to? So these are some options that it could apply to, or apply to more, or to less. Does anyone have any conversational thoughts about that, or?
Why does it, okay, at one point, I've missed a couple of meetings, but at one point, you put in some wording that allowed there to be like zero, not, not zero lot lines, but in other words, the wall-to-wall, you could have multifamily housing, and is that still in existence, or has that been sort of pushed aside, and now we're going back to multifamily only goes in control-free? Yep.
Well, I'm not sure those line up exactly, that like only goes in control-free, but in a way, historically, just been a conversation for control-free because of minimum lot size and such, and it applied elsewhere. But, you know, I initially rolled it out, just a number of options. One was just, you know, you can get rid of the setbacks in control-free, period. Two was leave them, but added, you know, I think it was just like two sentences, maybe one, that made it clear that the setbacks were not going to apply for shared walls between per-town homes.
That's the part I remember, yep.
And then we went on from there to.
I thought we were gonna kind of boost that on into other districts as well, not just control-free, so that multifamily housing was not limited to control-free.
Right, that part of the conversation, I don't remember.
Okay.
So the underlying zoning district would allow the density, control-free district doesn't have any density, whereas other, most other, all other have density limits. So for instance, like I believe traditional rural development is two per acre. So while you could have a shared wall in that, it would still be two dwelling units on that one acre of land. Maybe they're huge, maybe it's financially worthwhile, it doesn't, so perhaps we could add language in later, but.
I thought that was the path that we took and got way like, but, okay.
I know we, I won't say way like, I know that we went down a different path and got where we wanted to deal with a lot of other issues, yeah, but I think the primary impediment was what Adam said, was it works in control-free.
And I just want to clarify for the record, it's, it's my understanding that currently is, everything is written in the county, you cannot pull a billing permit. If somebody wanted to build an apartment building permit, there's no way to pull a billing permit for an apartment complex or condominium complex right now.
For rent.
The way our rules are currently written.
I don't, the building permit side, I don't so much handle, so I imagine there's things, but if it's to be counted as private ownership, so like a condominium, per se, no, I don't believe there's ways. For apartments, I do believe there's ways for it, but it's because it's one parcel of land, we're not subdividing anything. So instance, like the, the point what we were talking about earlier, so you can place houses close to each other, that's not an issue. We haven't dealt with any apartment buildings in the six months or so I've been here, so I haven't, you know, had to hash out those details, but I would imagine if you were to come in with a condo, it would be automatic, let's go to Board of Zoning Appeals. Apartments, I think, would be more of an in-depth conversation with the building officials, but probably, that's probably the best I have. I don't believe there's any issue putting apartment buildings in, or townhomes, if you're not gonna sell them.
In control-free.
In, in control-free. And you could put them in the other districts as well, but once again, you have those density limits. So Lake Residential is one per, one per acre, or two per acre, I'm sorry.
The difference in them, the apartments, is one owner that owns this building, and he's got it divided on the inside and got several people renting from him. They don't own anything, they just rent. The condos, they build those and they actually sell those, so each condo would be owned by separate, separate people, and that's the, the reason for this.
That's where you get a nice, unique wall, too.
And that, that's the density problem he was talking about.
Right.
Couldn't do condos unless you just, you don't have two per.
Most of them aren't more than two per acre. There's four per acre in some of the zoning districts, but still, that's four per acre, it doesn't really, so you, maybe you could do it with a small set of townhomes, duplexes, things of that nature, if you're not gonna sell them, if you're gonna rent them out. I couldn't, you couldn't subdivide into them because they would be non-conforming.
Not conforming to the VCA.
Yeah, once, again, anything for private ownership, that's a separate lot, for all intended purposes, a condo is, or a townhome, if you're gonna sell them individually, are their own parcels. And the setbacks, twenty-five, five, and ten, preclude that from happening.
Okay.
You're thinking exactly where I was thinking of. I thought at some point we said we were gonna move forward with a way for someone who wanted to, in some of these other areas, to put in townhomes so that those setbacks did not apply within a multifamily. You were gonna come up with just a few sentences that simply said, under these circumstances, we, we would, you could do this on these areas by saying those setbacks did not apply in a, in the goal of trying to reach multifamily housing for, but like I said, we, we've only been way like twenty-seven million times since then, so.
I remember that.
No, go ahead, Mr. Root.
I was just curious, where would that be? Residential, Lake Res, you wanna put?
No, 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 I mean, I, we, we were actually looking at trying to put it everywhere, right? Because they, everybody says we need multifamily housing, we need affordable housing, we need better ways to do something than just a house on this, just a house there. And, and we were looking at, at the best way, the most efficient way to do that, and we had a really complicated one, I want to say it was back last summer.
It's been a while.
It's been a while, and, and, and you came up with some really good sentences, and then bam, we just went off.
And maybe that's, my recollection's faulty, maybe they're so good that they apply to elsewhere and I've forgotten, but it seemed like they would only work in control-free in a, in a meaningful way. Because again, we probably don't just talk duplexes at best in, in other areas, which may not want to tread into maybe second things, but what I can do, and it's not hard, is to come up with a way to forward the discussion next week to address, right, more universal applicability, not just.
Well, we were just talking about Patrick Square and the fact that it has this unique ability to do a number of different things, all within the same area. So why would you want to limit it to one, I mean, if you've already got a beautiful set of homes, and somebody has a piece of property that they would like to see with some townhomes on it, and it's an appropriate place, it's a beautiful view of the mountains, or it's a beautiful view of the lake, or it's a beautiful view of whatever, why should they not be able to also do that there?
That's probably.
Besides its power.
The policy issue, that's not what I go into, but so just from a legal standpoint, probably we have to see it done in an easy-ish way to do it, goes along the lines of what Mr. Markovich is saying, so you don't, you have particular projects, we have PDDs, and not necessarily have to have this commercial percentage, we have to have that, that could be changed. So those are neat because they afford something like what Adam's gonna talk about next, it's on a project basis that the council is reviewing that project, and as opposed to more, I.
So this next thing would take care of that?
Well, it depends how we tweak it, how you discuss it, but yeah, it gives that possibility to do it on a project-by-project basis, and allow for, you know, more higher density development with open spaces, however it goes, without putting it into the code specifically, actually using the rules for every project. Does that make sense?
We can do what the, the T and D, we can do all of that, change the wording in our PDD to make it, or we can do the traditional neighborhood, can we not, and not have another zoning column in our matrix, not even do the traditional neighborhood? We could all change the PDD around to where it, we can actually do that?
Yes, I believe so, man, and this is a much-familiar state code, having not looked at this particular element in a long time, but I know that there are HUDs that are, that don't require a commercial element, and, so to me, it would be as easy as the second Markovich.
Like you do either or.
Tweak it so we don't have this mandatory commercial element.
Well, let's come back, let's come.
You may want to have a mandatory one.
Yeah, let's come back, I mean, let's come back to multifamily real quick.
Skip to there.
Yeah, and that's fine, because we're gonna talk about that in a minute. I'd like to ask our resident historian, again, if you take the mic, I mean, it's my understanding that if somebody wants to come in and build an apartment building, or a condo, that there's no avenue right now, unless it's approved by council, for a billing permit.
No, I think right now, their interpretation at the plan department and in codes department would be this, because that is one parcel, and if that building, all those apartments are in one building, then they would probably view that as being a single property and not now. However, there is, there is, and typically with an apartment building, that is generally gonna be true, because you don't parcel out a property like that. Now, that's not to say, when you get into commercial development, you can have situations where you've got a shopping center or something like that, and you do parcel these things out, and even if they're for lease only, they're still parceled out, because these are individual units, you bring them on at different times, different building permits to bring them into play, and when you change out, you know, so these end up being parceled out separately. So it gets very, kind of confusing sometimes, but the big problem right now is, is primarily with townhouses and condominiums, which, you know, a townhouse being a fee simple property versus being an apartment. So, so that would, where the, where the issue would, would come into play with the setbacks, but I would also say this, your other, even though you have lower density in these other zoning places, the other zoning districts, and even though in general you may not want to put a townhouse in something that's only got four units per acre, you would still be prevented from doing four units per acre, even in that zoning district, because those setback requirements are gonna have the same effect as it does in the control-free. So anytime you try to do something that's gonna be zero lot line, doesn't matter which district it's in, you're gonna have that issue, period.
That's what I thought we changed, but that's, I mean, so basically, we can build apartments, but we can't build condominiums or townhomes, right now.
Presently, and then, I think the way we're going, I'm checking again to see what I read, the way we're going with just in control-free, that it's easy enough to make it across the board, long enough we're not shifting, I guess, the density, which may open a hole if we can.
Well, there, there'd only be probably a couple of zoning districts that would, that would open up a can of worms in, you know, Lake Res.
Saying if you wanted to tinker with the density requirements, that would be what we would.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. So I guess what's, I guess, staff's recommendation to move forward as far as making something workable, I mean, I, I, and again, I'm getting, I'm getting tied down between condo and apartment and what I've heard in the past, so I, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm lost a little bit.
I think we started off simple and then moved to complex, and I think we're trying to come back simple.
Okay.
Unless I'm incorrect, we started off simple in the essence of what we've got is a problem with the ability to, to construct townhomes, because we don't have any way to get around the setbacks requirement between individual parcels. So those are townhomes. Apartment complexes, single parcel, one owner, got a building in there with four or five units, that's fine, because they're still owned by one, there's no individual lot lines, so that's, as, we understand that those are, if it happened, those are gonna be permitified with just one setback around the building. When you have townhomes with individual lot lines, individual ownership and fee, then we couldn't do it, unless I think some people are, you know, of variance, which really doesn't apply so much. So that's what the, that was our initial problem that we were tackling, so we're going with, all right, well, let's just change the language, so I got some language, or get rid of the setbacks, add us some simple language, thought it was control-free, but it can be to all of them, it's easy enough. And then, I don't know how it happened, but we got to the idea, well, let's just think about doing these things, and he's gonna get to them later, some more things to deal with, open space, I guess, density issues, parking issues, and a whole lot of, just a myriad of other details that go with multifamily housing that's sort of decided, and let's take a look at that as a third option. So that became more complex, and that's how we ended up the whole ordinance with that, and started trucking down the road, and that was put on the back burner. Now we're having a meeting, so Adam just got the bullet points to saying, all right, we're gonna talk about a multifamily housing ordinance, what parts y'all really would have on the table for discussion? Is that, does that happen?
Yes, sir.
So would a, and I try to take the easy way out, but would the easy way to resolve this is apply this to control-free, eliminate the setbacks in control-free, and then anything else in the other district would be by variance?
I think we could do it that way. Just, just, I'd have to think about the notion of doing them by variances. For some reason, it doesn't sit, I think, right as we sit here.
Okay, well, I, well, I'm just, you know, I mean, if we pass something, again, for Lake Residential or in the overlay, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna, you know, that's not gonna work. So that's what I'm kind of going back to, is a simple way to, you know, just limit this to the control-free, eliminate the setbacks, that gets us, you know, again, and again, this, we don't have a pressing issue of eight condo projects on the board waiting for a decision, but.
Only one so far has come through, apartment complex has come through.
Yeah.
You're talking about eliminating setbacks, you're talking about for all control-free or just for the multifamily housing?
For the multifamily housing and control-free.
Well, on page seven of this thing, we've got here, the height-dependent setbacks for every floor above the ground, an additional setback for the parent parcel from the side, from the side rear property line, so we eliminated them, we still got them in, in this.
That.
If it's a, if it's a two-story building, so we've got a five-foot setback from the sides and the back, they gotta be five foot from the property line, correct?
If I may, it's from the original parcel, so you get ten acres, so it would be five foot from that ten-acre perimeter. It wouldn't be in between the, the individual parcels or individual units. It wouldn't be in between the, the individual parcels or individual units. That was brought up by, something along those lines was brought up by one of the commission members so that, cause they didn't wanna, you know, if you're building next to existing couple houses, you don't wanna put a. Five-story tower right on the property line, if we eliminate all setbacks, you could by and large build right on the property line. If someone else is only five or 10 foot off their property line, you're putting a four or five-story building. On the property line, so that was just a mechanism to, uh, to push it back.
So they would have to start, if it's gonna be a four-foot, I mean, a four-story building, uh, they're gonna have to start 20-foot off the property line.
Yes.
And when we're talking, when, to me, when we're talking about eliminating setbacks, I'm talking about for density reasons. Correct?
Yes, sir.
For units.
Yes, to allow the combination of units, so all language, anything, language or ideas is all about being able to put as many people as is comfortable, as doable, as is feasible, as is the view of the commission. In a particular area.
So I think the question on the table really is just what Adam was going through here is for the discussion purposes, do you just wanna have the simple options? We've got the simple options, and we'll have those for remove setbacks, remove setbacks for conjoined parcels and shared walls. And then we go to the complex, and so this is the complexity he's walking through and asking, y'all wanna bring this to the discussion or is this just too much? And we just wanna get it off the table.
I agree with these.
But there's a lot, I mean, you know, I guess y'all have the whole parcel, there's, I guess, a lot.
I need to go to and down, I think there's only about 10 slides in this part.
Okay, um. We just skipped over minimum parent parcel size?
Yes, sir, I, yes, ma'am, sorry, yes, I just got it. So this was just as an attempt to look at, that's from like more like a PDD point of view kinda thing, like how many? As a opinion on acreage on a parcel size, if you want someone to put in a, a big project, this wouldn't apply for, we're looking at kinda minimums. So like, you know, anything under, say, like five or eight or 10 units or whatever number you all think about, it wouldn't be applicable towards. We could have a no, a no minimum parent parcel size. If you wanted to, it was just a, something that pulled off of another county's set of ideas or city's set of ideas.
You're a builder, Brad, would they, I mean. I can't imagine doing something like that on one acre, but if you could, I, I don't see why you shouldn't.
Well, are we going by parcel size or are we going by number, by number of units?
That would just be for pure parcel size if you came and throw.
If you had an acre land and wanted to put five condos on it and it fit within the. The setbacks around the property line, right, you could do it.
Yeah, that was the intention to kinda provide, like, do we want to promote? If we came up with a multifamily amendment, we'd be promoting this multifamily to a degree, like, hey, we have multifamily here. Do we wanna plan, say, okay, well, we wanna have multifamily, we're gonna provide the framework for multifamily. And in that framework, you can have it in any size parcel, um, like, or do you want one acre or two acres? So like, I believe Lake Residential, you have to have at least a quarter acre. Uh, so this is the same idea, it's like, okay, and you can't have anything smaller than Lake Residential than a quarter acre. For multifamily, do we wanna have a, a minimum size? Control free district, there's no minimum size for any parcel, you could have a.
Well, I mean, that, that's where you start getting, that's where you start getting confused, or to me, that's where it starts getting confusing, cause if somebody wants to go out and build a couple townhomes. You could do that on a half an acre.
Yes.
Probably do it on a quarter acre if you had sewer. Or somebody wants to go out and build 16 condos, you know, obviously you're gonna need more acreage and that, that's, so. That, that's where this starts getting confusing.
So, I mean, and that, and that's why I'm glad we have such, yourself, other people in the audience, how are builders? Um, so would it make more sense to have no minimum size and just rely on a, a number of dwelling units? Uh, you know, if you have more than X number of dwelling units? Or you have to have at least these many, just many dwelling units or just kinda get rid of it altogether?
Tyler, recognize Tom again?
One, in most cases, you are gonna have to have sewer to get any kind of densities, but not always, not 100%. We've got some awful big, in fact, this county has two of the very largest septic systems that are in the state or in this county. And so, and there, I mean, there are many, many, many acres, they're huge, but nonetheless. When it comes down to trying to create multifamily housing, um, a lot of times you're trying to figure out a way to get your, um. Your land cost down and make something affordable, not always, I mean, sometimes you might just like, if you're on the lake, you're trying to maximize the amount of units you can get in, get in there. Now, the other thing is just because of density requirement, maybe, let's say on, on Lake Residential, it's only four acres, I mean, four units per acre if you got sewer. Well, that's fine, but if you got 100 acres, then you can put 400 units in there. And so, um. And if you've got enough, if you've got enough. Lake frontage, you might wanna go with condos to max out the amount of units that you're putting down on that. So that you can, so I mean, there's, there's all kinds of situations and I'm not trying to confuse this matter, but. I mean, multifamily is, it, there's so many different situations that come into play. And, and so I don't see how a minimum, having a minimum sized lot is gonna, you know, what that does for, I don't see what, having different setbacks. For the height of a multifamily structure, how that affects anything either. In the sense that, I mean, we build three-story houses, so why do we, why do we have that setback all be the same? For a one-story house versus a three-story house? And, but now we're gonna start looking at multifamily and say, oh, no, if you're going above one story, then you gotta have a different setback for every time you go up another floor. These kinds of things are only gonna create this, make it more complicated and. Yeah, I just think. I think maybe in total, a long-term discussion, and like I said, there's nothing that deals with this in the comprehensive plan. And, and may, you know, but in the meantime, and even though there may not be anything being required to be permitted right now, it doesn't mean that you won't have somebody wanting to permit something tomorrow. And you can't do it. And so, um, I like a simple fix for right now, I think there's a reason to have a long-term discussion on multifamily housing, it needs to happen. But it, it's gotta be a much broader discussion, has to look at many different issues. And it can't be just as, you know, trying to take care of this one little situation.
Thank you. And again, I hate, hate to punt this till after our workshop, but multifamily housing is on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Workshop. I mean, it's my opinion that we. Kinda keep this thing in multi, in control free. That alleviates a lot of density questions and issues and then people would have to come for variances if they wanted to do something for multifamily. That gets into a density issue, but. You know, um, again. You know, I hate to punt this, but I think we just punt this till after our agenda. It'd be my opinion, we kinda keep the multifamily thing kinda gears towards control free in the future to keep it relatively simple. So we don't get into all the different zoning districts and, and then everything else would be handled by variance. But Mr. Root doesn't agree with that, I don't think, but.
No, not that I did. Public forums, a yay or nay?
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, not just, yeah, good, so, but I think, you know, again, once we get into this, creating all these matrix things, matrix to. You know, height of buildings, setbacks, green space, you know, it, it becomes a two-year discussion and, and again. We, we just need to make sure there's a permitting avenue. If somebody wants to come in and build, you know, four townhomes on five acres or four townhomes on two acres, you know, we just need to make sure that that's there if they wanna build it. So that's kinda my opinion, does anybody? Have a different opinion?
The only thing I'd comment is as the old lady on the commission. We, we are, what, a year behind in our comprehensive plan review, at least?
At least.
And I remember one of the last conversations we had was multifamily housing was a need, that needed to be addressed in the comprehensive plan. And so perhaps what we need to do at this point is to punt this for however far it takes it to punt it. And when we get through with this meeting with council and are told what to do, say, yes, ma'am, yes, sir. But if we may take some time as we're working on this to also continue our, or complete our review of the comprehensive plan. So that we would then have some kinda guideline to further this, you know, to continue with these development plans. Cause I think, I think we were like half through, maybe?
I don't know, I don't remember y'all doing much since I've been here the last few years, I've been, I would love, nothing better, it would reduce my anxiety greatly, if y'all would get on the comprehensive plan.
We need that, we're behind and we are, yeah.
It's my understanding, we started the comprehensive, a review of that in 2015. As a review, it needs to be updated in 2020, so by the time we complete our review, well, we need to update it.
I hope we can just shoot for making sure we're visionary for 2020 and get it done.
Cause we're, we're closing in on 2018 here shortly.
We are behind, yeah, so.
So, yeah, no, we, we probably need to devote, you know, a certain portion of our agenda to knocking out some of the items. And I think we, we've talked about that a few times, but we just haven't gotten back there because of other issues. And I think, I think after next week's meeting, I think some of these priorities are probably gonna change that county council sent us. And then we can, you know, I think we need to at least, at every meeting or every other meeting, address, you know, we gotta get through the review. My understanding, the review could be one meeting and, hey, we reviewed it, it's done, we'll see in 2020. Or, we were getting into a pretty detailed review and I think.
We were making changes, I mean, we were addressing what we saw.
Yeah, we were making, we were making, we weren't just reviewing it, we were making changes.
As needs such as multifamily housing and trying to get it into the comprehensive plan. So there should be some notes from about 2015, uh, late 2014, where we had made recommendations for the update of the comprehensive plan. And I wanna say we had gotten about halfway through it, but.
I'll look for it, I'm sure it's in the shared drive if it's, if it's there.
It has lots of arrows and circles and.
Yeah, we had made it through several sections.
Yeah.
If you find it, send me a copy.
Of course, sir. Also, if I may, uh, now that we have a full complement of, now we have another planner, this, that's kinda what was, I believe was the thing we were looking for, cause I believe every time. There's a lot of turnover, so now there's three stable people, three people in the, uh, planning office, so.
Okay, so, so let's, let's.
Yeah, exactly.
If there's no objection from anybody, we'll, we'll kinda table this till after next week and then we'll. Start discussing that and maybe that'll be the top priority once we get back to, after the meeting, to put that on the agenda to deal with multifamily.
All right, um, next item is, I'm gonna talk about the. Traditional neighborhood development district.
If I may, sir, so I, I spoke at the Planning Economic Development Council meeting two weeks ago, two weeks ago, and they asked, they, they voted, they asked me some questions about traditional neighborhood development. In regards to Patrick Square in Clemson as well as a few other locations throughout the state and areas. And one of the members had been to, uh, some meetings about it and the TND seemed very exciting to them. So, uh, the three of them discussed it, voted on it and asked us to come up with some, at least some thoughts, ideas, have a discussion about traditional neighborhood development. And so. I had no ability, cause we hadn't met, to kinda form anything, so what I did was I put up some bullet points here, this is just more, again, for discussion, talk about, ask some questions, just kinda give you the. The overreaching principles of the traditional neighborhood design. Now, where this differs from the PDD and I believe there's a case in Charleston, if I'm not mistaken, a little brought up. Where someone did a PDD, a plan development district, then they got sued because it was just a way to end run the, uh, underlying zoning. You know, some nebulously done plans, politics, things of that nature and, you know, it didn't turn out. So the TND would be for, as opposed to the plan development district, which is a combination commercial, which we just talked about not, kinda breaking that apart. TND would be just for residential, you'd be able to do this for residential. And the reason why it's not like a PDD would, because we have, at least, there's a thought of a, a vision for it, how it should be. Uh, so this is just kind of the overreaching principles. It would be a rezoning from any, from the Kotori district or any other subsequent zoning districts, sir?
Well, as it stands now, unless they pass this 50 acres or whatever, they're gonna have to have 200 acres to do this.
Great. Patrick Square in Clemson, I think is fairly close to that, it's about 160, 180, somewhere like 170.
Then they get to grab somebody that don't wanna be zoned into it, so, okay.
They were all one property owner, I believe, but theoretically, yes, sir.
Okay. Continue, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Um, and I just put there, developer has to choose to go into this zoning district, this wouldn't be like the overlay which we were talking about, which would be more of a, something that we would put on top of people's property. This would be a, a choice. If you're in control free, if you're in any other zoning district and you wanted to go into the TND. This is a choice you'd have to make, you'd have to go through the rezoning requirements, uh, and have to meet with council and have to show up for that. So this was at, I mean, it's really top-down rezoning, this is just an option, a framework. And that's what I mentioned before, the PDD makes you use TND for residential. Although we could imagine add a commercial section to TND if so choose, but that would kinda be counterintuitive. These, the principles are connectivity, walkability, mix of housing types, compatible architecture and community oriented design. Connectivity, so I just came up with this, this is a map I pulled off Kiwi key or just Google or shot, those two locations are 3,000 feet apart. It's about 36 minutes to walk and a mile and a half on the road, it's 3,000 feet. As compared to, this is, uh, the same, same distance, about 3,000 feet, this is at Patrick Square in Clemson. And it's 12 minutes of walking and 0.8 miles on the road. So the idea of traditional neighborhood development is that everything's fairly close, you don't really wanna walk much further than really a half mile. But, um, everything inside a community, you could walk to safely on sidewalks. Walkability, that is a sidewalk, you can't say that is not a sidewalk, but, um, who, who wants to walk there? Um, and that, so just having a sidewalk doesn't mean you have a walkable neighborhood. That's a sidewalk you wanna walk down after dinner or in the morning with your dog, you don't wanna walk down that. So that's the other. Item is walkability of the traditional neighborhood development. This is all Patrick Square, I use it cause it's nearby, there's townhomes, there's kinda duplex kinda things, there's single-family residential of various sizes. So they're all designed in a similar vein and they all have, you know, they, they all fit.
My only comment, I think this is awesome, you know, for me, when you, and, and I know it, it adds another column to the matrix, but. If the column to the matrix is clear and, and if it gives somebody another opportunity to build what they want on their property. Or to develop their property or to sell their property for the most amount of money. Who cares how many columns are in the matrix? For me, I, you know, it, it, I. I get about the PUD, whatever, um, but there was at one time a, a, a need for that. Equus was, uh, that was done for them, it didn't go, but the concept is still viable and good. So rather than boot it out, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, you know, there's, to me, there's not a reason in the world why you couldn't have both of them. As long as you understood that your, your goals for each one was different and, and you made it as workable and easy for the. People on their property as you could.
With Patrick Square, didn't Patrick Square kind of create their vision or was it Pickens County or?
It was a PUD, it was a plan unit development, um, I spoke with the developer or the, uh, project manager and he sent me everything they have, they're super excited about it and they were like, hey, you want us to come? Chit chat about it, like they were, I mean, they, they're a passionate group about this, uh, they created about a 60-page code of ordinances for their own, I forget how many houses there are. Or dwelling units there are, but they created their own 60-page ordinance and he was talking to me, he's like, yeah, I wish we'd been more flexible in some things and less flexible in other things. So that is a plan unit development for sure, that they came up with this whole own design, but it's, it is what it is and it's, I believe it's successful, I don't know. How to gauge that without looking at their books, but I mean, it's, it seems like it's successful, that's where the Clemson farmers market is, uh, there's some other amenities there as well.
So would our role be to say, you know, we've got this and this is possible? I mean, we're not looking at kind of detailing what the neighborhood looks like or. Is it just giving the, the developer an avenue to come in and do that, is that what we're?
Yes, sir, I believe it'd be more along the lines of saying, like, right now, you can't have sidewalks in this county. If you wanna build sidewalks, it's hoops to jump through. So we're saying, not only do we allow sidewalks, we're gonna encourage them. We, we need a 50-foot rideaway. We, we need a 50-foot right-of-way from center line. Uh, that's a lot of room. Um, now, they can be smaller, depending on the size of the road, but on, on the, the largest scale, and for the sake of me trying to convince you, it means a 50-foot right-of-way, um, that's, that's a big amount of road. So, it's, we can say, okay, we can bring it down if you, you know, have a build-to-line, as opposed to a setback where you can't build, uh, within that amount, well, we'll build to-line, regardless of what that is, all the houses will be in line, you'll create like a front porch for the, uh, a front yard, a front room for the community. So, yeah, it wouldn't be, it'd be prescriptive in kinda the idea, but not like, all houses should be the right color beige. At least that's my interpretation of what it should be, we could be prescriptive as, as you also choose, but I didn't anticipate it being a fully, a big thing.
I mean, as of right now, somebody would need 200 acres to do this.
Correct, sir, unless they were transferring out of another, uh, zoning district. So if they're in residential or traditional rural, or what, any of the other other items in the zoning matrix, they could transfer into it with any, any amount they want to. But out of control free, it would be 200 acres, as the code reads right now.
And the issue with amending the existing PPD to say residential, or, to me, if you're gonna have, if it stays 200 acres, might be 50 acres, you're gonna have some commercial in there regardless. Somebody's gonna want a convenience store, or gas station, or, I don't know, something close by to get some milk and, and bread in case it snows, you know?
And that makes the walkability aspect, too, is, is having places close by to walk to, a reason to walk, not just having the sidewalk, I mean, you can have the most beautiful sidewalks, award-winning sidewalks, but nowhere to walk, you're right, that could be an issue.
Right, I kinda go back to what Tom says, is it, you know, a more efficient way to get this in the code, to amend the PPD to say residential only, or limited commercial or whatever? Or do we need to create another one?
I, I was just, I, I'm passing along the message from county, from the Planning Economic Development Board, that they were asked, interested in adding another, uh, item to the zoning matrix. Now, we're gonna have the discussion with them, so these are valid, are, valid conversation points for us to have, for y'all to have with County Council, so...
I mean, it sounds like the real benefit of a TND would be, we could say somebody with 20 acres could do this versus 200, based on the other plan, correct?
No, not coming out of control free is 200, period. But you could do a 20-acre one from within another district, you would be more likely to have, like, say, if you're already in a residential district, you might want to do a TND, and you, it wouldn't be so hard to get 20 acres in a TND, right?
That's correct.
And again, this goes back to, well, this is nice, and it sounds good, but we can't do anything until we hear from council, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, and that was the point, it was just our conversation.
Have, will they have received all of this information?
Uh, now that you've told me to send it to them, they will.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, I think we're kinda a little bit in the holding pattern, and then, you know, again, first meeting, getting, throwing it, you know, this, you know, I don't see a big issue with it, other than, you know, can we make it easier by combining the two and changing a few words versus creating a whole new subsection? Um, and it's gonna be developer-driven, I mean, there's, it's not like, I mean, it's gonna be one developer...
Correct.
More or less coming in and developing however many acres, you know, just like Patrick Square.
Do you have a developer with an active interest?
I haven't heard anything, sir, but on the...
Yeah, it's gonna take sewer, it's gonna have to be close to, somewhere with sewer, but more than likely. Recognize Mr. Berkovich again?
I understand where you're coming from, in, in talking about the idea of whether you got 200 acres or 50 acres to rezone. The actual requirements for a planned development in Oak County County is a minimum of five acres, that's in the code already. So if you're in a, this is a different zone, it's only if you were in control free, that, and you wanted to, and you, you couldn't get your neighbors or whatever to, you know, if you decide you wanted to, to rezone it, yeah, you would have to have that 200, but the requirements for the planned unit development is, or for a PPD, or whatever it is, is only five acres.
Thank you. Okay. Again, probably more reasonable table, until we get some direction for the county.
And that was the last slide, anyway, it's just about front porches.
Yeah, so, we might, might need to extend the agenda for next Tuesday with County Council, but, or extend the meeting minutes, but, uh, anyway, you know, I hate that we're being so wishy-washy tonight, but until...
Yes, sir.
I think we get some better direction from council, you know, again, no sense in spending a lot of time talking about this until we go... All right. Um, any old business? Any new business?
I, I just have a question, 'cause I missed it. Um, we have, we now, we now have an interim chair and interim, interim co-chair, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Kisker.
And that's good through January?
Until...
Is that correct, or do we need to make that permanent through January?
We have a vice chair who's acting as the chair.
Chair, right.
And we have a interim vice chair.
Vice chair.
So, is it good till January? I don't know that anyone's gonna...
And nobody's gonna mow them for the job, certainly, but, you know, do we need to make it official that it goes through?
You're supposed to have a chair, you're supposed to have a chair, and so, bylaws and the, or, or ordinance says the same thing, you gotta have a chair. So you have someone who is an interim acting in that capacity, um...
And he can act as long as he needs to, until...
My, my thinking, because the statute is mandatory in the language of having a chair, is that the temporary, or the vice chair only be on a temporary basis, so I think it'd be better to have that as soon as y'all feel comfortable, by knowing who everybody is, to have it up on your agenda for about, I understand we're running out of years, so I may not make a great deal of difference, but I'll leave it to our acting chair, working with Adam, to get it on the agenda when it's appropriate time.
Oh, well, I mean, I was just asking, could we make him officially the, the chair through until the new...
Yeah, you could, you could have that, but since it's not on the agenda, that's something that, that would be a final action, we should put that on the next agenda.
On agenda. I just didn't understand that process, if it was just a temporary or permanent.
Yeah, you could, you could sort of vote, and maybe Mr. Kisker, someone can take the job, and the chair, and then vote in the new vice chair.
That was my question, that was, I just...
That's fine, okay. So, put that be on the agenda for next meeting? Vote. All right, well, I don't think we, sorry that we didn't accomplish a whole lot tonight, but, um, I think with what's coming up next week, it's probably just better to sit on some of this stuff and see what we're told to do, so...
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.